Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for July 12, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter, Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. We're going to move to item three on the agenda, which is announcements and committee reports. And the first item is 3A, which is the COVID-19 update. And our update as of July 12th is that all city facilities are now fully reopened to the public, and we've returned to normal business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The data from the Skagit County Public Health Department, as of July 11th, we had 5,368 residents of Skagit County had COVID in the last year and a half. We had 77 deaths, and 358 people have been hospitalized. That's county-wide. Here at Anacortes Island Hospital, they tested 18,476 people with a total positive cases of 368, and over the last 18 months, admitted 72 people to Island Hospital. As of July 11th, a total of 151,499 vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County. 65% of Skagit residents 16 and over have received at least one vaccine, and 60% of Skagit residents are now fully vaccinated. So if you still want to get a vaccination, you may go to VaccineWA, and that's an online tool where you can look and see whether vaccinations still available. The Skagit County has some pop-up dates. Tuesday, July 13th, tomorrow, at Skagit Valley Family YMCA, they will be doing a vaccine clinic from 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Then on Wednesday, July 14th, at the Skagit Transit Station downtown Mount Vernon, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And Tuesday, July 20th, Skagit Valley Softball Fields, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Those are all pop-up clinics. The current vaccines are very effective at protecting people from the worst outcomes, including hospitalization and death, even with the current COVID-19 variant. Research has shown that nearly all deaths related to COVID-19 are now reported in people who are unvaccinated. And that concludes my report on COVID-19 this evening. Are there any questions or additions?
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Young.
I would be curious in the future if there's any extrapolation of the data. I think part of what's being suggested now is that unvaccinated, you know, persons are most of the ones receiving or, you know, having COVID right about now. So I'd be curious to see what that is, if they're known, and then, if possible, the stratus of the age group, because I think, you know, there's a gap.
Okay.
And I think as so many of us have been vaccinated or choosing not to, at the end of the day, I think that that data goes forward as a great beacon to show people where we really are, and it's a reminder to be careful and we don't get so lost in the fact that we're wonderfully open again and enjoying restaurants.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. So we're going to move now to item 3B, which is our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee met July 7th, last Wednesday, and covered a variety of topics. One was the lack of adult daycare in our community now that the Gentry House is no longer operational. But the good news is that Eric Johnson, who's the deacon of the Episcopal Church, let us know that there's a group looking seriously at reopening that adult daycare and working on a long-range plan that hopefully will be serving up to 10 to 15 people maybe as soon as December. So that is potentially wonderful news for our community, and very glad to hear that. We spoke about the Unite Us platform, which is a network of providers and the services they're providing and the, what's the word I'm looking for? It's like a database. It's an ongoing database where, for referrals, where providers communicate with each other. So we're kind of exploring if that will work for us as a city to be members. A lot of detailed questions, like who would manage it, which departments would have access to it, how we would use it as a city. So Joanne Stewart from the Planning Department is helping explore those questions. One of the really exciting things about our recent meetings is the level of participation we've had from providers around the county. That's been really exciting, that people are supporting our work and contributing to it. People from Island Hospital, Northwest Regional Council, Degualich, we have licensed social workers, Salvation Army, and the list goes on. So there is a real upwelling of support and information sharing, which is really exciting. And we're learning a ton, and our report to council and the public is due. The more that we learn, the more we have to learn, so we're trying to keep all that together. But our next step is to plan our community roundtable here in council chambers, and the committee is working on the questions and discussion topics and reaching out to the community, to providers as well as interested citizens, and a lot of, as many licensed mental health professionals as we can get. And we want to make good use of everyone's time. So our next meeting is July 21st as a group. In the meantime, the committee will be developing the questions and discussion topics. We also talked briefly about the Housing Authority and criteria for getting on the waiting list, and as it turns out, this was something that I didn't know, that there's a very long list, of course, but if people have certain conditions or if they're vets, they can get higher up on the list. So don't let the long list deter you, because you may have factors in your life that would help you go up higher on the list. So that was really good to know. For Anacortes residents, yes. Thank you. And then we talked a little bit about the housing vouchers for homeless people who need shelter, and those can be obtained at the Salvation Army. People can qualify for two nights every six months, and also the APD, the Police Department, has been helping people get into motels. And then the family center will contact those people the following day. So the Police Department and the Salvation Army are really good places to go for those. And I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Moulton. At this time, I want to go on to item 3C, which is our Planning Committee report.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Yes, so it was the same group of folks, council member Walters and council member Moulton. We had our planning committee meeting just right before, at 5:00 o'clock today, and we really just, we had three members of our community who have spent a number of hours and a lot of time kind of exploring the idea of Main Street, which is a nonprofit that comes in and kind of assists towns to create a sense of community and come up with a plan. So they presented their kind of, their brainstorming ideas and their research and wanted to talk to us about if the city would be interested in pursuing this. They're a pretty enthusiastic group of folks who have some experience from places before they lived here. So I think we're going to continue that conversation and do some more research and have some conversations with Main Street. They actually, there's a number of examples, Gig Harbor, Mount Vernon, I think Fairhaven might be one. But it's an interesting idea to kind of bring community members, retail business owners, and also landowners who own some of those commercial buildings together to kind of create a way to encourage walkability and art and vibrancy in the downtown core. So that was a fun meeting we had. And just, I wanted to say one thing about, that I found interesting from our HACS meeting was the fact that if you want to join the list for Housing Authority, you can join any Housing Authority list across the country, but the big key is if you are an Anacortes resident, you can jump higher on the list for the Anacortes Housing Authority. So I think that that's something that I want everyone to know, and I think it's important that we get that word out there.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
And I think maybe by extension, because there's limited capacity, the Housing Authority largely is really taking Anacortes residents, not people from all over the country.
Okay. Is that everything? All right. So this time, we're going to go to item four, which is our public comment period. And at this time, we take comments from the public on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. But I also wanted to kind of go into the format. Now that we're back in session here in council chambers, and welcome to all of you. It's nice to see some of your faces again, just being meeting in person. But we have a hybrid meeting now, so you can, the public can not only attend here in person, they also can attend via Zoom. So when there is public comment, the way I'm going to do that is I will call for anyone in the audience first to come up and comment, and then I will go to anyone that is online, and there will be a little lag time there to bring that person on. So if I wait a moment or two, it's just because of a connection. But I think as we get used to this hybrid format, it'll start to feel really normal. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience here in the council chambers that would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda this evening to the council? All right. And is there anyone online that would like to comment? All right. I don't see any hands up. So at this time, we're going to move on then to item five, which is our consent agenda. A, B, C, and A, B, C.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we're going on to item six, which is a public hearing. This is also open for public comment. This is ordinance 3091, interim ordinance to facilitate the development of a daycare facilities in the R4 zone. This is a discussion item with possible action this evening. Welcome, Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience, it's nice to be back in person.
It is.
It's fun. So interim ordinance 3091 is interim ordinance to facilitate the development of daycare facilities in the R4 use zone. The development regulations currently allow for a daycare two, which is 12 adults or children in any 24-hour period. What we have noticed, especially council members, is that to have a daycare two in the R4 use zone, it requires a type four conditional use permit review. That type four conditional use permit review can be very extensive, very time-consuming, and somewhat expensive as well. By the time you pay the $1,000 conditional use permit fee and then draft drawings, have a neighborhood meeting, and then a public meeting with the Planning Commission, a public meeting with the city council, something like that can take upwards of four to eight months, depending on public comment. So the, as the process, you know, takes so long, it deters folks from actually wanting to go through the process and develop more daycares in the city of Anacortes. Currently have two folks who are looking at putting together a daycare that would be a daycare two with more than 12 children. And so they have asked us to review the regulations and see if it's not possible to have an interim ordinance that would basically not require the conditional use permit process and be an outright permitted use for that daycare two in the R4 use zone anywhere. And so we first read, had this read, I think it was the 28th of June, and this is our second reading and public hearing to move it forward. We then, from a staff perspective, will be coming back with a work plan within a few weeks by resolution for the city council to review and approve our next steps. Some of those next steps will be going to the Planning Commission and hearing from the public, the community, and some of the various stakeholders on exactly, you know, what they see as some of the consequences of something like this and benefits. I, you know, from what we have seen, the benefits are that we could end up with quite a few more daycares than we have now, which are greatly needed. What we don't know are what some of the impacts might be. So those are what we'll be looking at, at the Planning Commission and then ultimately the city council level. With that, a little bit long-winded, but not too bad. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those. If not, we could hear from the public.
Mayor Geer.
McDougal.
Thanks, Mr. Meesmer. If I recall correctly, we currently have capacity in town to basically accommodate about 12% of the demand. Is that the number from last week?
So as it stands right now, based on some of the language in the ordinance, which Mr. Walters provided some information on numbers here, there are only 12% of those had access to full-time licensed childcare, less than half of the Washington State average of 27% currently.
Got it.
And so this could add a significant amount of daycare.
Yeah. Do we know the two that are kind of pending or, you know, that are in line? Would that take us to 25%? At least, you know, get us to a less bad number? Or do we have that, a sense for how much?
Yeah, it would be less. I don't know for sure what the number would be, though.
Okay. That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Geer. Do we have any idea what kind of capacity those folks that are looking at taking advantage of this ordinance?
So one, if I understand correctly, is somewhere between 20 and 30.
Yeah, okay.
The second one is a combined school and daycare with around the same numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Young.
Mr. Meesmer, would you just elaborate just a little bit about that the public will still have an opportunity to participate, and it's sort of, you know, just not something that you make an application and you automatically approve for?
Thank you, Mr. Young. So at this point, once we get into, this ordinance essentially makes it an approved use in the R4 use zone without having to go through the conditional use permit process. However, having said that, this is an interim ordinance for six months, and they would have to come back and be renewed if it was for any longer. During that six-month time period, city staff will have to put together the work plan as soon as possible. With that work plan, go to the Planning Commission, take public comment, and try and understand all the impacts that might go with this. As an example of an impact, you know, say some organization wants to build a 25,000-square-foot daycare in the R4 use zone in a tight-knit residential neighborhood. That could be a fairly significant impact. So as we move forward, perhaps there's a square-footage size limit. There might also be some design standards, which we currently have some design standards, but maybe they might be different for a daycare two.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Okay. All right. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this ordinance? All right. Anyone online that would like to comment on this ordinance? All right. I don't see any hands up. So council, discussion.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, you know, some of the concerns expressed earlier by a few of us, I think we've got a review process in there that we might catch some of the things, and obviously, we all know it's a needed capacity, so I move to approve ordinance 3091.
Okay, and I'm going to close the hearing.
Oh, thank you.
And that's fine. And then we have a motion by Mr. Miller.
Second.
A second by Mr., who's getting it? Who said it first? McDougal. Second by Mr. McDougal. All right. So Ms. Hunt, would you take a vote?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're moving on now to item seven under other business. It's Resolution 3042, a resolution establishing the 2021 docket of the comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments. This is a discussion with possible action this evening, and Ms. Grage is presenting, and I believe she's online. Hi, Libby.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On June 28th, the council held a public hearing on the 2021 docket of comprehensive plan and development regulation amendment proposals. And you heard from the petitioners and also staff who gave summaries of each of the proposals. And we also had several members of the public that provided some comments. And since that meeting on the 28th, the public comment period, the written public comment period has ended. Staff did not receive any additional written comments beyond those that were provided in the council's packet for the meeting on the 28th. And so based on council direction at the last meeting, the department has provided a draft resolution, which is in your packet, establishing the 2021 docket for council's consideration. And if the resolution is adopted by council, then staff would begin drafting the amendments as needed and conducting the environmental review. And then we would anticipate bringing those to Planning Commission to begin public review with opportunities for public input beginning in the September timeframe. And that's really all I have this evening. Staff's recommending adoption of the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. Walters.
I don't have any questions. I think this was pretty non-controversial the last time we looked at it. So I would move adoption of the resolution as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Walters. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment before council takes final action? All right. No one online?
Second.
A second by Mr. Young. So we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we're moving on now to item 7B, which is ordinance 3092, repealing AMC Chapter 5.47 related to single-use plastic bags. This is open for public comment. It is a discussion with possible action this evening. Welcome, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. I will share my screen quickly, bring up the current ordinance. So this is the proposed ordinance 3092, and as the mayor said, it addresses Anacortes Municipal Code Section 5.47. So the quick background on this, back in November of 2019, city council adopted an ordinance that established Section 5.47, which was related to single-use plastic bags. Council approved the ordinance establishing the section of code to ban the use of those bags within city limits. However, it was implemented with a six-month implementation period. So the ordinance was adopted on November 4th, 2019. The six-month period put the effective date at April 4th, 2020. So within that timeframe, of course, the COVID pandemic developed, and the city council's response to COVID included deferring the plastic bag ban. Also, within that same period of time, the state developed their own bag ban that had an effective date of June 11th, 2020. And I've summarized within the ordinance on these bullet points, the things that the state bag ban does, which essentially reflects what the city's intention was. So the state's bag ban is deferred as well. It will be deferred until the COVID pandemic emergency is declared over, which it has not been yet. But once the emergency is declared over, the state bag ban will go into effect automatically. So this ordinance will remove the city's code section, which implemented the bag ban, because it becomes unnecessary with the state's bag ban. So I hope that all made sense. Be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
I would go, I think this is quite good. I would go a little bit beyond that in that we would be permitted to keep our own bag ban under the state law, and it is slightly different than the state law. The state law imposes an eight-cent charge. We do a 10-cent charge. Then there's a 12-cent charge under the state law after a certain date. I just think that it's very important generally that we minimize this type of stuff and have consistency across jurisdictions. There's not really a lot of value in us having our own slightly different set of rules. Plus, we'll have to administer them versus somebody else having to administer them. So it makes sense for us to repeal this, harmonize our regs with the states, and let the state take the lead on this, now that they have seen fit to do so.
Right. Any comments for the council before we hear from the audience? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Anyone online? No. Okay, back to council.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. McDougal.
I move to approve ordinance 3092, repealing ordinance 3053 and AMC Chapter 5.47.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath. Is there any additional conversation? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on now to item 7C. This is open for public comment. This is a Thompson train static display plan, discussion with possible action. And Ms. Swetnam, our city's council is here to present and review what we've done and where we are tonight. Thank you, Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, members of the audience. So the presentation from staff is really brief, because there's not much to add from our discussion last time. The materials in your packet include the mayor's proposal to develop a static display of the train, and that included a budget ask to allocate $140,000 from this year's budget, and then provide for, in future budgets, we estimated around $87,000, which includes a .7 FTE. Since the last discussion, the only materials that had been added to the packet was an additional letter from the Thompson family through their attorney. I believe they're joining us tonight and wanted to be able to comment. But other than that, I don't think that staff has much to add, other than that I checked with Mr. Hoagland and Mr. Lunsford within the past few days to see whether there had been any community groups or individuals who had come forward with offers of donations to help fund the program, and nothing concrete had been received by staff to date. So I suppose if there are folks who wanted to comment and had some ideas or suggestions that that could happen tonight, but as of now, nothing concrete has been received by the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but also happy to turn the discussion over to council.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. Counsel, any questions before I open it up for public comment? Okay. Is there any member in the audience tonight that would like to comment? Yes, please come forward to the microphone. And then when the members of the audience here in the council chambers, after they speak, I will go to our Zoom format for more comments. Welcome. 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 Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Swetnam.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
My name is Hayden Thompson. My father designed and built the train that operated in Anacortes from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen ninety-nine. The train that was in trust and good faith donated to the city of Anacortes in two thousand and twelve. I personally observed the time, money, and passion that went into the creation of the train and what was needed to care for it. I saw this through the eyes of a child and as an adult. No person or entity since two thousand and twelve has been able to replicate my father's essence in managing the train, which is why I am here tonight to represent the Thompson family's intentions and to also clarify any previously misinterpreted facts, especially with regards to certain statements and rumors that we intend to sell the train. Let me state for the record that the Thompson family has absolutely no plans to profit from or sell our father's train. I am here to communicate to council the anger and outrage that has consumed our family regarding our donation. I am here to plead with the council to return the train to the Thompson family because in nine years, the city has not honored the agreement made in two thousand and twelve. Because the city has shown it cannot provide the time, money, and passion needed to care for the train as agreed. Because to honor our father and my mother's husband, we cannot stop until the train is returned to our family. Our family has lost all trust in the city. First, in how the donation was managed in the early years. And then in two thousand and nineteen, my mother was misled into signing a memorandum of agreement. The MOA did not represent what was discussed or agreed between my mother and the city. And as a result, she has incurred huge cost to engage an attorney. And the job of our attorney was to make sure that we were heard and not further misled by the very city we made a donation to. The train is not just an asset to be managed by city council. It was a donation given in good faith and trust to the city of Anacortes, and the city has failed its obligations. After nine years, the intention of the family has not wavered. After nine years in the city's possession, nothing has changed. On January nineteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, Mayor Maxwell signed resolution number fourteen ninety-five. This resolution was to dedicate a portion of the Burlington Northern Railway right-of-way in the name of Tommy Thompson Parkway. This dedication, as stated in the resolution, was because, and I quote, "The Anacortes community wishes to express its pride and appreciation for taking Tommy Thompson, for having Tommy Thompson live, work, and dream among us." Unquote. The mayor knew the respect that should be given to a man for his contribution. And now my father, through this train, must be shown the same respect. My father gave so much to this city. Council members, on behalf of the city of Anacortes, please vote today to give the train back to the Thompson family so it can be treated with the respect that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So we also have someone online. Would that person like to speak to the council this evening? Oh, go ahead, come on up, Ms. Guffey. Ms. Carney, we have someone else in the audience, and then if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and the council. I'm Tammy Guffey. I've spent the last three weeks talking to people, talking to people on the streets, during the parade, watching past meetings, reading over Ms. Thompson's requests to the city. And I've also spent a lot of time inviting community members that felt strongly that the train should stay with the city. I've invited them here. Even though I believe it should be given back, I wanted them to be heard as well. I spoke with people who've lived here forever. I've spoke with those who are new to town like myself. Now, I know there are many feelings that are feeling the sting of loss of history with the recent teardown of the ninety-five-year-old church on the corner of Twenty-Eighth and Commercial. The difference is that this is more than Anacortes history. This is a family's history who is asking for a donation that promises weren't kept to return back into their care. I believe that we should return the train back to the family and let this matter rest so money, time, and energy can go to the civil services that our city needs and deserves. How this dream of one man has turned into a nightmare for their family saddens me. Now, I ask you, council, to please vote, give this back and let this matter rest. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Guffey. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to address the council on this? All right, Ms. Carney, are you wanting to address the council? I see you're online. Hey, you need to turn your mic on. Okay, there you go.
Hello, I have nothing to add. What Hayden Thompson said reflects the family's message.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've heard from the audience and members of the public and council. I'm going to turn it over to you for discussion.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller?
I think Mr. Hayden Thompson said it best. I don't believe the city does have the time, money, or passion to continue forward and jump ahead of other priorities that we have with the city.
Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just want to say thank you to the Thompson family for your persistence in pursuing this. I know that's not been an easy process to go through. I at least personally feel like when it was accepted as a donation from the conversations I've had, it was in good faith. Unfortunately, you know, it's probably a testament to your father, Tommy Thompson. The fact that he worked so hard and was actually able to see it come from a dream to fruition is pretty incredible. So, you know, as much as we wish it could continue and we were able to honor that agreement, we, at this point, are not able to. And, you know, thank you for your persistence and thank you for your parents for sharing it for so many years and giving us really wonderful memories. I think that's probably the reason it's so difficult to see it go. But if it's going to go anywhere, back to the family's care is where it should be. So thank you, and I'm still pleased that it's called the Tommy Thompson Trail. I think that that allows us to have good memories and hopefully there will be some sort of documentation of photography if we don't have enough currently. I think there might be in the museum. Maybe Mr. Lunsford can speak of that. Just so making sure that we have appropriate documentation so that there can be, you know, it can be shared, that memory with future generations and visitors to the community. But at this point, I'm in favor of returning it to the family.
Mr. Walters?
I also would like to extend my appreciation to Mr. Hayden Thompson for being able to attend in person tonight. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties that we experienced in prior sessions. I also, where we left it last time was we were going to look to see if the people of Anacortes wanted to contribute money to upgrade the train shed and keep the train here. I personally reached out to one local organization that I know has resources and had expressed interest. Nothing has been forthcoming. And it was written up in the paper. We could obviously have done more to fundraise for this, but I think really the realization is that even if we got donations to upgrade the train shed, the quantification of the costs that are in the mayor's plan, the FTE costs, the maintenance costs to keep the train after we've built the building are so substantial and significant. It's really not a plan that really works for the city. It has helped maybe demonstrate to the community that this isn't really the approach that we should take. And frankly, there's just no one that deserves to hold this train more than the family. It's not as if they're the long-lost descendants of Tommy Thompson, you know? It was their father, their husband. They were there when this train was created. And there's no one capable of filling the role that Tommy Thompson had in this train now. And I think some of us have been saying that for quite a while. It just isn't something we can replicate now. So I would certainly be in favor of moving on from here by returning this train to the family. We should do all of that documentation, I think, as Mr. Miller suggested. We may want to even have a ceremony if the family is so inclined. But we ought to end this and move on and celebrate what we had. And we won't have it again, but some, all good things come to an end.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I also would like to thank Mr. Thompson, the Thompson family, and also the people of Anacortes who love this train so passionately and have such fond memories and really, truly wanted to keep it going. I feel that we've really thoroughly explored options. And I feel that the best way to honor Tommy Thompson's legacy and the train and the family is clearly to return the train to the family.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougal?
I don't know that I can say it any better than has already been said up here. So I'll just say thank you to Mr. Thompson for coming and speaking with us. And I also support returning the train to the family.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young?
Hearing all the sentiment of my fellow council members that I deeply respect and also, again, having the pleasure to meet Mr. Thompson here today, to see you here. I've heard all the arguments. I've made my position very clear from the very beginning. I do believe that it was a gift to the city. And I think that unfortunately, the city fumbled in its application of that contract. I do think, though, that there were people here within the city willing to step up, offering their financial support, demonstrating their ability to do so, having the expertise to do so, except that the process for getting here was incessantly arduous. It was difficult for the very people who also wanted this project to be here in town and honor the family member, which, memory, which I deeply respect. So with that said, you know, there were those that fell away after such a long journey and ups and downs and meetings and non-meetings and production that never really arrived. And so in their letters, which is a part of record, I think it would be very clear that they were there and that they had the financial support to do so. And many of us knew those people that could do that financial journey to support it. Including in that is the building, including in that is the opportunity it would have presented to the city to not only have tourism, but also honor the memory of a great man, Mr. Thompson, which I've heard a lot about in the twelve years I've been here. But with that said, the group itself has withdrawn their support, and the mayor reached out to try to find if there were others willing to step up to the plate and demonstrate that. And that has not happened. As a result of that, I think that I have vigorously defended the opportunity for the city, what I believe was in its best interest. And because of also hearing the family and listening to the family and realizing that the support for this project, particularly the financial support, is no longer there, I'm agreeable to the majority of the sentiment here. But I needed to be clear that with all due respect to the family, my argument has never been about you. It really wasn't. It was about the contract. It was about the right of citizenship. It was the process with which we were moving, in my view, ran awry of the systems that we have in place. So my role as council is to speak to that, to argue for it, but I'm one of only seven. And I'm thankful now for having made this journey. But I'm also thankful for the Thompson family for being continuous in their support and desire to have the train come back to them. And I am supportive of that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walters?
Everyone has spoken?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I was going to speak after the vote.
Oh, all right.
Afterwards.
I was simply going to ask that staff or the city attorney draft appropriate documents to make that transaction happen.
Okay, is that your motion?
Well, I was going to ask unanimous consent to have the city attorney draft whatever appropriate document. I assume they'll have to come back to us for approval.
And Mayor Gear?
Yes.
I would just, thank you. I would just add, from being on the museum committee, we may need to address other supporting types of materials that were dispersed around the community that some folks have come forward and said that they have in storage. I just, before, that should be addressed in tandem with the return of the train. And I just want to say one thing. As one of the fellow museum or committee members, we've had some very long, in-depth, lively conversations. But I do want to be really clear, from my perspective on council, I think that the mayor and various staff members worked in very good faith to try to find solutions with various community groups and respect the family to the point where it was excruciating at times for both community groups and the family to finally get to this point. So I just want to give all the staff members involved a thank you. It wasn't easy, but I do think everyone was working with good faith to get to this process, to this step.
Thank you. So what I heard is that we're going to ask Ms. Swetnam to bring back a document to proceed, to return the train to the Thompson family. So that is the action tonight rather than a vote on a plan. So that's what we will do. And then I'd like to say, Mr. Thompson, from the community, thank you to you and your family for an incredible legacy and a collective history and memories. And I think that's why it has been so difficult for both your family and this community to let go of something that truly is dear to so many of us. And I also want to offer my sincere apology for any pain and disrespect your family has felt during this awkward couple of years. Truly, from the council and staff perspective, we had never meant any disrespect. I understand how it happened. I understand that we caused pain, and I sincerely apologize because this community has nothing but love for your family and the train and your father's legacy. And I thank you for coming tonight and speaking to us in person. I'm sorry that we couldn't do it over the last eighteen months, but we're here tonight. So is there anything else? So at this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we will return with documents to return the train to the Thompson family. Good evening, and thank you all for attending this evening. The meeting is adjourned.